Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 26, 2021, a public board meeting of the Nishamani School Board. We'll have a roll call, please, Mrs. Burns.
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hellenbeck.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations, the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school, safety, and security. Mrs. Berner, any announcements this evening?
No announcements.
Thank you. Dr. McGee, your superintendent's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. I'd like to start on a somber note. Last week, Nishamani lost one of the Nishamani family. Mr. Nick Izzy, a custodian at the Fertabar Proquesting Complex, passed suddenly with an incident while at work. Nick was beloved by his colleagues and the staff in which he supported throughout the day and leaves behind a family, children, wife, and grandchildren. So if you'd all join me in a moment to reflect on Nick and then support his family, please. The COVID report for the week is pretty much unchanged, though the numbers were down last week. I'm not going to get excited about it until I see a pattern of down over several weeks. Schools continue to be safe and manageable, and things are getting back to normal, at least within our schools. I'd like to try to emphasize some positives here. I'd like to start with our staff. Though things are getting back to normal, let's face it, "normal" isn't what it used to be. So staff from our custodians, our bus drivers, to our teachers, our support staff, are struggling themselves as students struggle and parents struggle as we get back to a normal situation as best as we can. I'd like to underscore our transportation department. Surrounding districts are experiencing more difficulties than we are, and I think it's a testament to our employees in that department. Our bus drivers who are going above and beyond, our office staff who is scheduling things to make sure it works because of their work, from my view, other than a delay here and there and a different bus pickup, for the most part, Nishamani is running without issue in that area. But there are people, over 100, who are doing exceptional work to get that done. So I want to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed. Hopefully, we have solutions to that somewhere in the pipeline so we don't have to continue working at over 100% in that area. Moving on to some positives, I have a letter here from Ford Diamonds, conquering childhood cancer from Penn State Health. They are thanking me, us, for a donation of $7,500 that came from Minithon last year under the direction of Ms. Montone at Nishamani High School. So Nishamani High School, through their efforts of Minithons, donated $7,500 to conquering childhood cancer. The next Minithon is January 14, 2022. And those of you who might remember, not that long ago, a young lady stood at the podium and challenged us to celebrate, or not celebrate, to make awareness of childhood cancer month of September. So I'd like to report, Mr. Parentano, that Sarah Harvey and our friends had lunch with me, and we've come up with some plans for next September and throughout the year. The first thing we're going to do is connect them with those Minithon folks at the high school. It was a great experience. I did learn that I do not speak 5th grade girls very well, so fortunately, Mom came along to translate for me. Continuing with the positives, last Friday was pink out throughout the district, again sponsoring a good cause. I received a text message when I got home after the football game that Nishamani High School, Richard Kane, the advisor of the student council, donated over $11,000 of proceeds to benefit cancer awareness from Nishamani High School. So those that are following along, in the last 60 seconds, Nishamani High School and the efforts of the districts have donated nearly $20,000 to good causes through their community service. Both of these organizations are co-curricular organizations. Co-curricular participation around the district is at the highest level I have seen it in my career. So students, in addition to our traditional athletes, the idea of co-curricular, just getting together to do something that everybody likes to do, it's booming throughout the district, to the point we weren't planned on supervising and busing that many kids. So that is a positive and a net result of everyone working together. You'll see that reflected on our co-curricular appointments later in the meeting. Last Saturday, I was able to attend the 28th Annual Kaleidoscope of Bands at Nishamani High School, a great annual event where bands come, I won't say compete, they're judged. So that, the 28th Annual, my favorite part is at the end when those bands come together and Mr. Lipton stands up there and all the bands together play the National Anthem. So again, another co-curricular event that has lasted throughout the decades. And finally, talking about another event, I wouldn't call it co-curricular, but it's definitely service-oriented, we have two speakers here from Maple Point who would like to talk to you about the upcoming Veterans Day Parade. So Stephanie and Emma, are you with us? It's your turn. So this is Stephanie Harkins and Emma Hunter, who'd like to again remind the Board and the community about a tradition here at Maple Point about Veterans Day. Ladies.
Good evening. My name is Emma Hunter.
And I'm Stephanie Harkins. Maple Point Middle School will be holding its annual Veterans Day ceremony on Wednesday, November 10, 2021. This is a wonderful way for our students and community to show appreciation for the sacrifices that our local veterans have made and to celebrate the courage, and to celebrate the courage that they have shown in defending our country. This year, the recognition of our veterans will look a little different, but the sentiment is stronger than ever. The Maple Point students and staff would like to invite veterans and their drivers to participate in the Parade of Heroes drive-through on the Maple Point campus. Using a one-way traffic flow, vehicles will enter through the driveway on Woodburn Avenue entrance, be greeted by staff, students, distinguished guests, and depart on the Langhorn Yardley Road exit. In recognition of safety, participants will remain in their vehicles. The parade begins at 11:00 a.m. and should conclude by 11:30 a.m. In the inclement weather, our parade will take place on Friday, November 12, 2021. In addition to the Parade of Heroes, we'll be creating a video to be distributed to the community through Nishamani School District's social media sites. Remember, no registration is necessary to participate in the parade. We will see you on November 10, 2021.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. And I believe I see Mr. Hastings back there. I'm not sure if I see anyone else as part of the committee of Nishamani Maple Point staff who makes sure that this happens every year. So thank you, Mr. Hastings, and the people that you work with. Mr. Parentano, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. McGee, and thank you, ladies, for that presentation. This will bring us to our first period of public comment. You'll be called to the podium accordingly. You'll have three minutes at the podium. Please give us your name, the area in which you reside, your occupation, and please, no personal attacks. Mrs. Burns, you want to call the first participant, please? We'll call you at the appropriate time, okay? Is there anyone on the...
Matthew Taylor.
For agenda item? Just, how many? All right. Call, just call, just call. There's only seven, we have plenty of time.
All right. So, last year in September of 2020...
Sir, give us your name, the area you reside, and occupation, if you're a student, say you're a student.
All right, so my name's Nicholas Montero. I reside in Langhorn, and I go, I'm a student. So, can I start? All right, so last year in September of 2020, I was here talking about our school district's team name, the Redskins. The names are racial slur used towards Native Americans and violates Nishamani's own policy 347, which states that discrimination of any kind is prohibited and specifically lists slurs as a form of discrimination. Native Americans all across the U.S., and more specifically, Native Americans in the Nishamani community, have expressed discomfort and offense with the name, and the school board still decided to keep it, going as far as spending $400,000 to defend this racist and offensive name. The last time I was here, the school board said that it could not speak on this issue until the pending case regarding it was settled. So now that it is settled and you can talk about it, what is the excuse for keeping this racist name? Okay. So, I do have a question. Can I ask a question?
We don't answer questions at the podium. We'll save them to later in the meeting in Board comments.
Okay.
And Board member may or may not answer your question.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so my question is, if the school board's policy on racial slurs, is there impermissible, then how does the school district defend using the term Redskins when it's a dictionary-defined slur towards Native Americans?
All right, thank you.
Matthew Taylor, Red Rose Gate, and I'm self-employed. We are now eight weeks into the school year, and the community prevalence of COVID in districts with strict mask requirements versus districts with no mask requirement with a simple parent exemption are nearly identical. The data continues to show, week after week, that they make no difference. As far as I'm aware, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Penridge, Council Rock, and Central Bucks are doing just fine conducting school in a normal fashion, with many students not wearing masks. Those schools aren't being shut down, classrooms aren't quarantining, and their board directors aren't being sued by the state. Based on prior votes and other explanations at the last board meeting, I believe there are at least five of you that believe masks should be optional for students. State and local governments overreach their authority over you, taking away your ability to represent the people that voted you into your positions. If you truly believe masks should be optional, why is it that you do nothing? Council Rock and Central Bucks have lawsuits fighting for their students and for their parents' right to choose what is best for their child. It's easy to sit back and wait for the mandate to be lifted, or for another lawsuit to overturn it, or to think that once kids are able to be vaccinated, that'll all go away and we'll finally be able to move on. However, the CDC already said that masks need to stay on even after they get vaccinated. It'll never end. I want to know what the five of you are doing to fight back for these kids and their families, for what you believe should be their choice to mask their kids or not. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe behind the scenes you have things in the works. If that's true, please elaborate and let us know what you're doing. Next Tuesday is Election Day, and some of you are up for reelection. I'm looking forward to seeing the results of those races. I believe we have two fighters challenging for a couple seats on this board, in Alicia LaFerty and Tanya Rinkis. I think that's exactly what this board needs. I, along with many other families, need to see more fight from this board. I wasn't in this district during the mascot name lawsuits, but if you can fight that hard and spend that much money for a fictitious school mascot, I think you should be fighting for your kids in this district much harder than you are currently. If you can no longer, you can no longer sit back and wait for things to change, you need to make the change happen yourselves. And lastly, for those of us who have spoken at board meetings, sent emails, made phone calls, fighting for our kids, only to feel like our voices go unheard, we have the biggest opportunity to make our voices heard loud and clear when we vote on November 2. Thank you.
Stephen Lindley. Stephen Lindley.
My name is Steve Linden. I'm a 34-year resident of Feasterville, and I've graduated three of my five children from this school district. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to address those assembled here this evening. My comments concern not only the election that will be held one week from today, but also those elections that will occur in the future. I've observed the proceedings in this room for some months now, and have easily and gratefully been impressed by those parents that have been courageous enough to come here and voice their disapproval with certain aspects of the rules and regulations they, and more importantly, their children, our children, have been faced with. At this time, it is absolutely necessary for me to point out that we in the Nishamani School District are extremely lucky to have our board populated by so many people who think like we do. And even though you, we, were less than pleased with the result of at least one recent vote we witnessed here, we have to remain ever mindful that, to a great extent, our board members were left with few, if any, real options available to them. As I'm sure you're aware, or at least I certainly hope you're aware, students and parents in other districts, some of which are in other states, some of which are much, much closer to home, have not fared quite so favorably. If you're not sure about this statement or unaware of events relating to districts closer to home, please see me after the meeting for clarification as well as documentation. If anyone in this room is under the impression that their need to come here and voice that disapproval will end with the current mask issue, I'm here to say that that is a very dangerous and naive misconception under which to operate. The mask issue is about to turn into a mandatory vaccination issue, and if we're all not hypersensitive to it and completely on it, and I mean completely, turn into a curriculum issue, which will not be far off. Once again, let's not lose sight of our current good fortune with the board as it is currently constituted. But as Ronald Reagan astutely reminded us, freedom is only one generation away from extinction, and there's an important lesson to be learned from that. The apparent favorable composition of our school board is only one local election away from being extremely disfavored by many of us. Great care must be exercised to forestall such an eventuality. In fact, if due diligence is not taken starting now, eventuality will become a certainty. Fortunately, there are proven processes and plans of action to be adopted that can, and in reality, have in other jurisdictions been extremely successful.
You have 10 seconds.
But the time to make ourselves aware of what must be implemented in the future is now. It isn't easy, but it certainly is necessary. Let's pledge to start right now.
Thank you.
My name is Randy Miles. I live in Langhorn. I'm a research scientist and a father of three Nishamani students. My comments are in a very basic nature. We are so divided in our nation and in our community that we can't even agree on what basic facts are. When I was in school, I was taught that all truth is relative, and that has brought us to a place where we don't even know, we don't even believe anymore that truth is knowable. And so, the left believes the pundits on the left, and the right believes the pundits on the right, and no one can agree on even what the science tells us. So what do we do? We need to think critically, and that's my point. We need to teach our kids how to think critically and not just teach controversial theories or disguise as facts, but we should teach them how to evaluate the truth and identify errors. In order to do that, we need to think critically ourselves. We cannot keep regurgitating slogans and mantras of our political parties. We must pursue truth and learn to identify truth. This is foundational to education and is foundational to leadership, so it's doubly foundational to the school board and to the Nishamani leadership. The problem is that we are fallible. My favorite songwriter, Rich Mullins, sang, "We are frail, we are fearfully and wonderfully made, forged in the fires of human passion, choking on the fumes of selfish rage. And with these are hells and are heavens so few inches apart, we must be awfully small and not as strong as we think we are." My point is this, it takes enormous amounts of humility to admit, even to recognize, when we are wrong, or if even we may be wrong. I've seen this in myself, and it brings me great shame when I consider the pain I've caused others because of my pride and my inability to see my own failures. But humility is critical and critical to critical thinking, because pride blinds us and keeps us from recognizing truth. So there's another problem. Despots and all those who hunger for power over you and over all of us do not want you to think for yourself. They want you to only accept their version of the truth and follow their advice and listen to their experts. And if their experts disagree with yours, then they discredit you. But they can't stop you from thinking for yourself, and they can't stop you from fighting for the truth unless you let them. So I urge you as a school board, and I urge everybody in the district, to do two things. First, humbly evaluate what do you actually believe and why do you actually believe it? And secondly, if you are convinced without a shadow of doubt of the truth, humbly, respectfully, and tenaciously defend the truth. And for those who are willing to hear it and are asking, "What is truth?", I have only one recommendation.
10 seconds.
Thank you. Jesus Christ said, "I am the way, the truth, and life." And if that discredits everything that I've said, then you probably haven't read His teachings. So I challenge you to read them and then reevaluate what you think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is James Powell. I live in Twin Oaks, and I work for a warehouse. Once again, I'm here for parental choice. That is what I stand my grounds on right now. I want you to give power back to the parents in these situations. By you letting you, by us letting you dictate how, not just you, I'm talking about the whole government, everybody above you, and how they can tell you what to do and what to think, just like the previous talker was talking about. Critical thinking, math, basic science. You kept, everybody wants to tell us to keep on looking at the science? Science is numbers. Why don't you look at the numbers? You look at the numbers, the death count for 2021 is in the same realm as it was for the last 10 years, maybe 200,000 deaths here and there. It's not as bad as we think it is, people. We need to think critically here. We need to give the parental choice back to the parents so we can dictate how our children want to be. If we don't teach them to think for themselves or have them know what's going on, we're never going to be better as people. We all need to think about everything that we do and the things that we put on the community. It's not right what they, what you and everybody above you does, because if you look at the numbers, the numbers don't lie. It's the one thing in this whole world that is taught the same to everyone. We all do math the same way. Look at the numbers. Take the masks off the children. Let us decide that. I have already decided to take my kid out of this school. I was here, I came to this school district because it was a good school district. I grew up in the Pensbury School District. I had cousins that came here, that played football for this school, that played hockey for this school. They bled, the blue and the red, I'm sorry, because I'm still black and orange. You know, I'm learning your ways. But I came to this school district because I knew it was a good school district. I didn't move to this school district because I wanted to put my kid in CCA. No, I came here because this school taught good values to my family's members. They both went on. My one cousin's a cop, he's a sheriff. You know, my other cousin, he runs a company. You guys taught him how them to become good people by letting them choose or having their parents tell them, not tell them, but just give them the idea that everything's going to be okay. But you guys got to let off the reins a little bit. You got to give power back to the people. This country was built for the people, by the people. You guys are having a vet parade. You're honoring people that fought for this country. Just do the right thing and take off the masks.
Thank you.
I'm Azelia. I'm a student here. I live in Langhorn. My thing hasn't been spoken about yet on the agenda, is that okay?
Go right ahead.
Okay. In July of 2020, after the Black Lives Matter movement was resparked, Superintendent Dr. McGee wrote in an email in a section titled "Civil unrest surrounding Black Lives Matter and systemic racism," that racism and discrimination have no place in our district, and that he and the district would work to combat it. And Policy 347 of Nishamani School District states that this district does not tolerate discrimination and includes verbal bigotry such as slurs as an example of impermissible discrimination. But the district is not carrying out these policies at all. I have never seen my school in Nishamani High do anything to combat racism. In fact, I've only seen them enable it. One of many examples of this is the fact that a racist student at my school is still freely walking around my school with no consequences, as if the school does not care at all that she is racist. Last week, a black girl posted...
There's no personal attacks. You can't name names. All right, please keep your comments to the subject matter, okay?
Last week, a black girl posted a video of a racist white girl at my school saying the N-word with a hard R, and the video was from two to three years back, and called her out for it on social media. And the next day, the black girl was called down to the office and sent home because she said that she was uneasy about being around the racist student. The next day, the racist student posted on social media bragging about the fact that nothing happened to her and laughing about the situation. Later, the racist student was escorted out of gym by two teachers as if her life was in danger or something, and brought to the office. Obviously, I was not in the office, but the racist said herself to students in her physics class that the three principals she was talking to told her that she was the victim in this situation and to report to them if anyone bothered her about it because they would protect her. She bragged that the school was protecting and covering for her and that her stepdad is a member of administration, making her untouchable. And she's been bragging on Snapchat and TikTok ever since that she didn't get in trouble, laughing about the situation and saying that she doesn't care about the backlash she's gotten for being racist and about how not sorry she is. But I don't want to put too much attention on her. To be clear, this is the school district's fault. This girl knew she could get away with this because she knows you people do not care about racism. What kind of anti-racist school protects racists? And yes, I understand that the video was from a while ago, but the post of her saying that she did not care and administration trying to cover for her are from last week. A real anti-racist school would have punished her because no anti-racist school would allow someone who's done and said these things to freely walk around school with no consequences. And to tell her that she's a victim and that they'd protect her was even worse. You guys say you are an anti-racist district, but anyone could say that. The actual handling of conflicts involving racism in this district, though, show that Mr. McGee's anti-racist email and that the anti-discrimination policy in this district is just a front to make yourselves look better. If this district was actually anti-racist, a lot of things in this place would be different. But in this specific scenario, that racist white girl would be punished, anyone who tried to cover it up would be punished, and you guys would set a precedent that would make sure that anyone who was caught engaging in racism would be punished, because right now there is none, which makes your anti-discrimination and anti- and anti-racist policies and promises just look performative. If all three of these things don't happen, then your anti-discrimination policies are lies and this is a racist school district who does not care about the well-being of its black students. I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Um, can I ask a question too?
Go right ahead.
Um, so first of all, I want to know what like the qualifications or maybe disqualifications are for like running for the, for the school board to, to like, you know, be, be elected?
That's a political question. This is a school board, so we're not going to answer a political question.
What? The question is about the school board. What are you talking about?
You're asking how you run for school board.
I asked, what are the qualifications for someone who wants to run?
Uh, that is set by the, by the, by the county and the state. That's a political question.
You wouldn't know as the school board president?
I know, okay? But we're not going to talk about that because it's not related to the school's business, okay? That information's available from the Bucks County website. You can go on there and you can research that information.
All right. I also have another question. Do you guys often use your religion to, you know, make decisions based off the school? Because a person who gave a speech before me were, was talking about Jesus Christ and, you know, his readings and how it should influence your decisions. I would hope that wasn't happening because not everyone at this school district is Christian, so that would be a violation of religious freedom. So yeah, I want to know that. Thank you.
No further soundings.
Did we call those that were excluded? Okay. All right, we're going to proceed now to our-
Can I ask you about a separate issue real quick?
No, you already had your three minutes. There's a second. Excuse me?
He didn't use his three minutes. He only used one minute.
He had his time at the podium. He chose not to use his three minutes. There's a second comment period towards the end of the meeting and you're more than welcome to come up at the second comment period and make another statement, okay? All righty, that brings us to our business agenda, starting with the routine matters. I'd like to make a master motion for 2.01 minutes, 2.02 treasures report, 2.03 check register and procurement card purchases, 2.04 investments, 2.05 exonerations. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan, would you make a master motion for 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, and 3.04?
I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 3.01, retirements, resignations, end of assignments, 3.02, certificated appointments, 3.03, leaves of absence, and 3.04, revised leaves of absence.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And master motion's been made for 3.01, 3.02, 3.03, 3.04. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. 3.05, Mr. Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 3.05 co-curricular appointments resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following co-curricular appointments of certified support staff. There are 73 names on the list. I would like to pull out item number four from the list and approve the rest of the list.
Motion's been made on 3.05. There are 73 names on the list. It's been asked that the one name be omitted. That would be name number four. May we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? You guys want to have another race this week or?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, 4.01, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 4.01, retirements, resignations, and of assignments resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff. There are 14 names on the list.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. Motion's been made on 4.01. May I have a second?
Second.
I beat you to it. There you go. Mr. Allen with a second. I'd just like to take this opportunity to, we have one employee, Lynn Stradling, if I'm pronouncing her name right, a library aide, was with us 31.4 years. Thank you very much for your service to the Nishamani and we wish you well with our, with your retirement. Hearing any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, a master motion for 4.02, 4.03, 4.04, 4.05?
I'd like to make a master motion for 4.02, support appointments, 4.03, ancillary support, support appointments, 4.04, leaves of absence, and 4.05, revised leaves of absence.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. And master motion's been made for 4.02, 03, 04, 05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bowman, 5.01, please.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion 5.01, overnight trips, whereas according to the Board Policy Number 618, trips extending overnight are permitted by authorization of the Board of School Directors only. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approve the overnight trips listed below, and there are six trips listed.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Motion's been made on 5.01. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. I'm sorry.
Abstain. I abstain from that.
You're going to say, do I have to do a roll?
You do need to do a roll call.
At this point, we'll do a roll call. Mrs. Burns, call normal roll call, please.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach? Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
This whole side of the table, our mics all died.
Yours is on.
Yours is on.
Oh, it is.
Mr. Marington?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Abstain.
Seven yays, two abstains.
Motion passes with seven yays and two abstentions.
Just a point of order, Mr. Chairman. If there isn't, Mr. President, I'm sorry. If there is a abstention, the reason for the abstention must be stated at the meeting.
At this time, I would like to ask those that abstain to state their reason for their abstention.
I abstained from this vote because one of the class trips my child will be attending who attends the school.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
I abstain because I have a child who will be attending the junior class trip and I also have a child who will be going to the cheerleading national qualifier competition.
Thank you. Now move us to 5.02, American Education Week. Mrs. Bowman, would you read that as well, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion 5.02, American Educational Week. Whereas public school, public schools are the backbone of our country, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas being equippeding, by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, public schools give them hope for and access to a productive future. And whereas, public education employees work tirelessly to serve our children in communities with care and professionalism. And whereas, public schools are community catalysts, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby recognizes November 15 through 19, 2021, as the 100th Annual Observance of American Education Week as this district works to empower each child to become a productive citizen and lifelong learner.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Motion's been made on 5.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Sullivan, 6.01, please.
6.01, Act 34 hearing schedule, new elementary school project in Langhorne. The Board of School Directors in the Shamy School District hereby adopts for the new Maple Point Elementary School Project, a maximum project cost of $43,364,152 and a maximum building construction cost of $34,621,642 for the construction of the new Maple Point Elementary School, Middletown Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. The Board of Directors of the Nishamani School District hereby authorizes and directs a public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on Thursday, December 2, 2021, in the auditorium at the Maple Point Middle School, 2250 Langhorne Yardley Road, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, 19047, to provide information to the residents and taxpayers of the Nishamani School District and to solicit comments relative to the project. The Secretary of the Nishamani School District is hereby authorized and directed to cause a notice of such public hearing to be published once in the Bucks County Courier Times. Such publication will appear on or before November 11, 2021 and to be in the form attached. The Board of School Directors of the Nishamani School District hereby authorizes and directs that a description of the project be prepared and made available to the public no later than November 11, 2021, and that such description be mailed to the news media for release no later than November 11, 2021. The Board of School Directors of the Shamy School District hereby authorizes and directs the administrative staff, solicitor, independent financial advisor, architect, and construction manager to do and perform or cause to be done and performed on behalf of the school district, any and all acts and things as may be necessary in connection with the project in order to carry out the purposes of the act of this resolution. The proper officers of the Nishamani School District are hereby authorized and directed to execute any and all documents and to do so and cause to be done any and all acts and things necessary or proper for the execution or carrying out of this resolution. The Board of School Directors of the Nishamani School District hereby authorizes and directs the proper officers, officers of the Nishamani School District to submit to the Pennsylvania Department of Education a certified copy of this resolution, together with a copy of the minutes or transcript of the aforementioned public hearing, a proof of publication or the notice thereof, and a complete description of the project, all as required by Act 34 of 1973 of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, as well as any other documents required by the department in connection therewith.
You got to get the end.
Resolution adopted is 26th day of October, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Motion's been made on 6.01. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Before the board has any, I would like to ask our attorney, just for the public, to explain the necessity for this procedure.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Parentano. The Pennsylvania School Code requires for any new school construction to have an Act 34 hearing. That's what this resolution is setting up. The Act 34 requirements require a public hearing, advertising, notification to a newspaper, this, in this case, the Bucks County Courier Times, and I guess a project booklet to be available to the public. So again, this resolution is setting all those applicable dates in accordance with the school code. So on December 2, it looks like, there'll be a hearing, I guess, in the auditorium at this school for the purposes of complying with the school code.
Thank you. And for additional transparency on this motion, the fact that we're having an Act 34 meeting, hearing, excuse me, does not mean that the school board has, has approved the project or entered into any agreements for the project at this time.
That's correct. The project would still have to go out the bid. There would have to be financing put in place, so yes.
Right. And the dollar figures that are in this agreement are there based upon construction estimates of a not to exceed number and actually do not reflect the, the actual end cost of the project, which will be determined after bids may or may not be accepted.
That's correct. If the, I'm sorry, if the numbers, this is a not to exceed number, so if it's lower, that's fine. If it goes above the two numbers set forth in the resolution, then we would have to go back through this process again. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Parento. Are any other questions or comments from the board? Does this require a roll call?
Yes, roll call would be-
Okay. Mrs. Burns, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hollenbach?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentano?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine yays, zero noes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Bring us to 6.02. Mr. Cirillo, would you read that, please?
I'd like to make a motion for 6.02, Assessment Appeal Settlement, whereas Michael J., forgive me, Torsia and Jean Kristen Torsia filed a 2021 Assessment Appeal for Tax Map Parcel 22-077-036 with the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County, Pennsylvania, at Docket 2020-06624. And whereas in conjunction with the business administrator, the solicitor for the Nishamani School District has negotiated and has recommended to the Board of School Directors that the said tax year 2021 Assessment Appeal be settled as hearing, is hearing after set forth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School District stipulates and agrees that the 2021 tax year assessment for Tax Map Parcel 22-077-036 owned by Michael J. Torsia and Jean Kristen Torsia be fixed at $56,070 per the attached stipulation and be it further resolved that the School Board of Directors authorizes the school district solicitor to execute the stipulation as presented and to the file, and to file the same with the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, upon approval by all parties, including the owners, county of Bucks, and Middletown Township.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Motion's been made on 6.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kovitz? Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Allen, 6.03, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parento. I'd like to bring a 6.03 motion to the floor, Middletown Township Police and Lower South Township Police MOUs. Whereas Pennsylvania Code 10.11 directs that each chief school administrator shall execute an update on a biennial basis, a memorandum of understanding with each local police department having jurisdiction over school property of the school entity. And whereas the Nishamani School District desires to continue its memorandum of understanding with both the Middletown Township Police Department and the Lower Southampton Township Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the memorandum of understanding with the Middletown Township Police Department and the Lower Southampton Township Police Department outlining the relationship of cooperation and mutual support.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. A motion's been made on 6.03. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. At this particular time, Dr. McGee, could you just elaborate on, on why we have these agreements?
Sure. I guess almost a decade ago, it began with one school resource officer at the Shamy High School, and since then, we have moved to three total around the district. And I think the, the last sentence of the motion, building a relationship of cooperation and mutual support that focuses on students. So not only are, do they make our, our schools a safer place, but they also build relationships between our community and our students and our staff. And I see it every day. They are part of what goes on in our school. They are part of what goes on in our schools. The three of them are dedicated law enforcement officers that only work at the Shammany Schools. So they are part of what we do every day, and I'm looking forward to continuing that for another decade.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any other comments, questions, or concerns from the board? I would just like to continue to extend my thanks and thanks from the entire board to the supervisors of Middletown Township, as well as the supervisors of Lower Southampton that work in conjunction with us to provide these services for our students who are our residents in our schools. I have witnessed firsthand this program, and it is excellent, and I only hope that it can grow more in the future. So saying that, hearing no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes nine to zero. Now comes to the subject of the day for Mr. Marington, six point zero four, please.
Okay, yeah, six point zero four is the Langhorne Mayor's Playground Agreement of Sale. Be it resolved that the school district enter into an agreement with Langhorne Borough for the sale of Mayor's Playground dated October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, herein after the agreement, for the sale by the school district of three parcels of real property located at East Maple Avenue and East Richardson Avenue, Langhorne Borough, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, commonly and collectively known as the Mayor's Playground. Further identified as Bucks County tax map parcels eighteen dash oh oh four dash one eight eight, eighteen dash oh oh four dash one eight eight dash oh oh one, and eighteen dash oh oh four dash one eight nine, for the sum of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in accordance with and subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement, which is attached heretofu and incorporated into this resolution. Be it further resolved that the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, and Solicitor of the school district are hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the school district and under its corporate seal or otherwise, in accordance with and subject to the conditions set forth in section seven oh seven of the Public School Code of nineteen forty-nine, to execute the agreement and such other documents, and to take such further action as may be necessary or desirable to effectuate the agreement and intent of this resolution. And this resolution is adopted on this twenty-sixth day of October, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Motion's been made on six point zero four. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Allen. Any comments, questions, or concerns? At this time, Mr. Torre, would you just explain a little more in depth about, you know, why we're transferring this property, some of the history behind it, and the fact that it's going to remain perpetual open space use for the public?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Piratino. Right now, the Mayor's Playground, it's currently obviously owned by the district. It's rented to Langhorne Borough. It has been rented to Langhorne Borough for park purposes for, I guess, over thirty years. I'm not sure of the exact time period. But this agreement is going to obviously transfer the property to Langhorne Borough. The transfer document, the deed that's going to be recorded, will have a reversion clause in it. If the property ceases to be used as a park use by Langhorne Borough, it will be reverted back to the school district. So basically, the school district will essentially retain control of that property for the purposes of a park use if it needs to. It is permitted specifically by the school code to be sold to Langhorne Borough without court approval because it's within the geographical boundaries of the school district. So that's, I guess, some of the background on it. It's an as-is purchase. There's no responsibility really going forward for the district on this.
And as for some of the lineage of that particular, those particular parcels, as I remember we discussed, they originally belonged to Langhorne Borough. I believe they were, Dave would know better, they were originally just like.
When the Shammany School District was created back in the nineteen fifties, the consolidation of the Shammany School District, the Borough basically gave the land to the school district. And at one time, it's where they played football. The Shammany High School, when it was still Langhorne, actually played their football there in what's now Mayor's Playground. Some of those other fields also were athletic fields. That arrangement has lasted from the early nineteen fifties until today, really. The Borough and the district have had a relationship going back, I guess, as Mr. Torre said, at least thirty years. And the Borough has made a lot of improvements on the property, playground improvements, fencing, soccer fields, gardens, and so forth, walkways, and has felt that they would like to get it back, you know, to buy the land back so they can continue to make further improvements on it without having to consult with the district. So that's kind of the short story. It can go on and on, but that's the short version.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Hearing nothing else, this would be a roll call vote again?
Yes, it would be a roll call, Mr. Piratino.
Call the roll, Mrs. Burns?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowman?
Yes.
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallenbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Kovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marington?
Yes.
Mr. Parentana?
Yes.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yes.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Motion passes nine to zero. That will bring us to our closing end of the board's meeting this evening. Does anyone have any other board business they wish to put in front of the board this evening? Hearing none, we're going to move on to our second period of public comment. During our second period of public comment, you can approach the podium on your own. The same rules apply. You have three minutes. State your name, the area in which you live, your occupation, and please note personal attacks. Whoever wants to address the podium, please make your way to the.
I live in Langhorne, and I'm a student at the Shammany High School. And I'm rising once again in defense of the Shammany's mask mandate, or the state mask mandate, but keeping masks on students as a whole. I'm sorry. But as a high school student at the Shammany, I'm here to tell you that masks are not the problem that many parents in our community are making them out to be. Masking up our students is one of the only proven ways to stop the spread of COVID-19 and keep our students in school. Masking works and the science backs it up, period. It is in everyone's best interest to keep the mask on as it allows students to remain in school for in-person learning. As somebody who experienced online learning firsthand, I can tell you that I would do anything to remain in person, and if masks will keep me and my fellow students in school, then so be it. Living through this pandemic, I have noticed a trend. Those that complain the most about the consequences of the pandemic are those that are doing the least to stop this pandemic. Wearing a mask during a pandemic is a civic duty that protects your fellow neighbors, our families, and allows us to do our part in ensuring healthcare workers can do their jobs. It is imperative that we keep masks on so that we may finally end this pandemic. I would like to also add one more thing. I do not believe that this is a parent's choice because it does not exist in this situation as one parent's choice can put another parent's child on a ventilator. This disease has the potential to infect everyone it comes into contact with, and for this reason, we must all wear our masks. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Does anyone else wish to approach the podium? Go right ahead.
Hello, I'm Sophia Giudetto. I live in Feasterville, and I'm a student. I just have four questions for the board. For the bus drivers, do you think that they deserve better pay and better benefits? And do you think that that would, like, help the issue? For like the whole racism issue, do you think that the district correctly punished the student that was saying the racial slurs? And do you think that we should teach more about, like, different histories, like Black history, Hispanic, and Asian history? And do you think the school board will be handling future racial conflicts the same way?
Does anyone else wish to approach the podium?
I have a question. It's kind of like.
Start off with your name again.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I already said it, but it's Azelia Miles. Thank you. So I have a question that's kind of expanding on what Nico talked about, which was the team name situation. So last year, we were here, we spoke to you about it, we gave you guys a bunch of points as to like why you shouldn't have it, about like it violating your own policy and, you know, things like that. And you guys basically said that you guys weren't gonna tell us anything or defend it at all because the case was pending. It's not pending anymore, so I want to know what the excuse is and what your defense is, and if you can answer that. And also answer about my speech about why the girl in, about why the girl in my high school wasn't punished, and like how you guys are gonna set a precedent to punish kids who are caught engaging in racism since you guys claim to be anti-racist, or at least the superintendent claims that and your policy claims that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Go right ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Great. Hi, my name is Jeremy Blumenfeld. I'm a lawyer. I live in the Maple Point Development and have lived there for twenty years. I have a high school junior. I just wanted to offer a few comments in further support of the continued requirement for masks in schools, including for the high schools. First, I appreciate that after the August board meeting, people generally have been respectful of the views articulated by others, and I'm glad that this board is asking people to be respectful of others. So thank you for that. Second, I wanted you board members to hear and know that there are people who do support masks in schools for students, including for high school students. It's reasonable to require masks in school for the same reasons you engage in lots of other activities requiring safety protocols for students in school to help keep the kids safe. We've all seen the emails from Dr. McGee reporting that the case counts in our community remain high, but that the schools are safe. Masks are part of that safety effort, so thank you for that, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Once, twice? Okay. I'll move us on to a board comment. Dr. McGee, do you have any commentary you want to offer this evening?
Sure.
Wait a second. I want credit for getting it right this time.
Thank you. To our students that spoke, thank you for coming. What I will offer is when I'm at the Shammany High School next this week, I will stop by and visit you. I think, Azelia, we have spoken before, if I'm not mistaken. So we will continue that dialogue. I think the best way to have a dialogue is when one can talk back and forth. This format is not where we can talk back and forth. So I will visit you at the Shammany High School when I'm there later this week, and we will set something up. As far as the specific issue, I think someone stated it themselves, it's three or four years old. So the issue is resurfaced because of it's on social media, so it's a lesson to everyone. What's on social media stays on social media forever. So again, I'll talk specifically about that, not in this forum.
All right. Mr. Parentana? That's all. Does any board member? Go right ahead, Mr. Torre.
Thank you, Mr. Piratino. Just before there's board comment, I just want to make a couple of things clear about some stuff I heard during public comment about the masking. There is in fact a statewide masking order. It is in place, it applies to every school, whether it's Council Rock, the Shammany, Pensbury, Palisades. Also, my understanding, and I heard this as well, that there was some litigation instituted by some school districts with respect to that masking order. I don't believe that to be the case either. I think the lawsuits that have been filed were not generated or not filed by the school districts. Instead, they were filed by citizens of those districts. So I just wanted to make that clear.
And the one suit was joined by, was it the Speaker of the House, or?
That's my understanding. I'm not sure which one.
Yeah, one of them joined that. Correct. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments this evening? Adam, you want to go right ahead?
So to the folks, the students that came up and spoke today, I just wanted to thank you for doing your part. We all have our roles to play, and I appreciate the questions that were asked. And it's not just the students that showed up today. We've had students in the past that have questioned the masks, whether they were anti-mask or they were pro-mask. I just think it's really important, I believe there's another gentleman here spoke about getting to the truth, and I think it's really important for us to discover that truth through healthy dialogue. I've seen it happen here on several occasions, and I think it's really wonderful to see, and I'd love to see even more of our students come out and speak what they believe their truth is, and again, encourage some extra dialogue. So for that, I really salute you. I appreciate each and every one of you, and that's what makes this district what it is. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Anyone else? Saying none? Mr. Allen, would you like to add something?
I would like to address a few things, starting off with our Maple Point students and the Veterans Day Parade of Heroes on November tenth. I can't put into words how thrilled I am that that event is going forward this year. It's usually an event that we're able to welcome our veterans of the community into the Maple Point Auditorium. It's a wonderful event. If I am able, I always try to take off and attend. It's fantastic. Just to see how the veterans and the children, our students, interact is just phenomenal. And I am, you know, with COVID, being out of school, I know that that was a missed event. I'm glad to see it in whatever form it can take place that it's back. So and I thank our students for coming to the podium and, you know, addressing it. The Mayor's Playground, I am also quite glad that we don't have to keep going through that every year. Dave has spoken on many occasions, you know, that we are able to close that deal. I'm happy for the board here, and I am happy for the Borough that their ownership of it, or I guess stewardship would maybe be a better word for it, that allows them to do various things that they weren't able to do under a lease agreement. So I'm very glad we were able to come to an agreement on that. Now, carefully walking the line here because we cannot discuss, or I feel it is inappropriate to discuss, politics or election issues. I will just say that, and I believe a number of us feel this way, that our votes are informed by a belief that these are our schools, this is our community. What goes on here should be our decision, not something that comes from Harrisburg or even Washington. There are certain guidelines we obviously have to follow, but local control, for lack of a better word, would always be my preference, and that has informed my votes moving forward, including the question on the Redskins. I feel, to me, it's a valid question. Our students have brought it up, members of the community have brought it up. It's a discussion that needs to happen. We can freely talk about it somewhat now, and I believe that discussion will happen at some point. But my point and my fight for our right to retain that name had everything to do with local control of what happens in our schools. And I will conclude with that because anything further could get.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Anyone else? All right, just trying to finish up real quick. Some of the students that came up, they made questions about how we deal with student discipline. The school board does not deal with student discipline. Student discipline is an action of the Student discipline is an action of the school administration. There are actually state and federal laws in place that, if I'm correct, prevent the administration from discussing some matters related to student affairs with us. Saying that, the school board does have policies in place. We empower our administration through those policies to carry out such, meaning how they're written, I don't know, lack of a better word, the law of the land is, you know, basically how our administrators take the policies that the board writes and then implements them into everyday actions inside the school.
Yes, so our job is to take the policies, interpret them as intended, and put consistent, fair, equitable procedures in place to make sure they're implemented across the district.
So while we will not and cannot legally comment on individual cases of discipline, when the administration does bring them to us, we evaluate them, we ask questions all the time, okay, and the administration informs us based upon the law. The only time that the school board is informed directly about a case of student discipline is when the administration has recommended a student for expulsion. At that time, the board takes on a legal role, and there is a hearing that takes place, and the board weighs in at that time. One of the reasons why the statute states that the board isn't told about discipline issues is because of the fact that we may have to act as a jury at some time in the future, and we are not to be biased by prior information. So if the school board has faith in the administrations that they have hired and empowered to carry out those policies, we trust that they are doing such. And if cases arise where there is an inference that, from complaints from the public, that may ask us the question at, we will bring those questions, and we will look for answers. But as far as us commenting directly on student discipline, we don't do that. That is not, that is not our role in the statutory scheme, as it may be, of how student discipline is protected. Some asked about the Redskins thing, as Mr. Allen, thank you for reminding me. Mr. Allen alluded to, I believe it was our meeting, June 2020? June 2020? You can go back on the website. In fact, I believe the statement is still on the front page of the Shamany District site. I read a long statement about the resolution of the issue with the PHRC. I stated on there specifically about what I think the board's next actions need to be. I stated that the board and the district need time to recover from the COVID first, which is a bigger priority, to get this district back to where it needs to be and providing the education that we need to be, and that we do need to have a bigger conversation with our community at large, discuss whether or not we will maintain the symbols and images and the name, and how we can, and if we do choose to keep them, how we build upon them and start to integrate possibly more indigenous people of this area's history and culture into our own curriculum. So there's a bigger conversation to be had about that. As far as those that believe it's racist and those that believe it's perfectly okay, that's a matter of opinion. This board, there's varying opinions on this board. None, as Mr. Allen indicated to, the team name Redskins really had nothing to do with our fight against the PHRC. The PHRC attempted to take control away from the school district, and the board felt that that was wrong, and we were going to fight against that. Some person at the podium, I can't remember which person it was, made the relationship between the, you had the suit over the Redskins, why can't you have a suit over this? It's comparing apples and oranges. I understand it seems very similar, but it's apples and oranges. It was very specific, it was geared directly towards us, there were no other partners in it. Right now, as Mr. Torrente alluded to, there's already a court case pending, it's in the Commonwealth Court of Appeals, is it, right now? Us joining, adjoining that suit has no impact on how that suit's going to proceed. If the Commonwealth Court rules against, what would it be, they're ruling against the Health Department, right?
That's correct.
Right, ruling against the-
The Secretary of Health.
The Secretary of Health Authorities, what it's based upon. They rule against that, I can almost guarantee you, the Wolf Administration is going to bring it to the Supreme Court, okay? That doesn't change what we're bound to do, okay, as Mr. Torrente explained. I believe that the numbers are going in the right direction. They've been there for some quite time, and I would like nothing else to get out from under this, but I am not going to put this board in that fight where it's already happening. For us to take on another legal action on an action that's already pending in front of Commonwealth Court doesn't make any sense whatsoever. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of everyone's energy. It's not going to change the outcome. So that is in motion. Either the governor will relent on his own, or the courts will make the decision for him, or they could possibly enforce what the governor is saying. So, you know, I think we're in a good position with that. Again, as I said at the last meeting, I wish the plan that Dr. McGee came up with would have been able to be implemented. I think we would have been able to prove for ourselves how the virus could move within the schools, and which groups, you know, could or couldn't be exposed. Look, I've said it many times, I'm going to be the first person to take it off, but, you know, we've had kept everybody in school. I think we've had 10 exclusions. We've only had 10 exclusions this year, which is fantastic. So, but as soon as there's movement, either from the government or from the lawsuit, you know, we're going to move, we're going to move with it. One last question, and then I'm going to end. One of the young ladies, our students, made a question about what some person was talking about as far as their belief in Jesus and why that's allowed to happen. You know, the First Amendment is a two-way street. You know, just because you don't like another person's view doesn't mean you get to restrict what they get to say. You know, if you're at the podium and you have a specific view on a specific item, and as long as it's not profane and against the rules, and it pertains somewhat to school business, you're going to be able to say that. So the same right that protects you to come up there and label people as racist is the same right that protects him to come up to the podium and talk about how his faith impacts his decisions and how that related to how he expects the school district to act. It's not for us, there's no questions at this point. It's not for us to act, act on your opinion. It's for us to absorb what you're telling us and see how we can respond and how that interfaces with what our job as school board directors is here to do. I would no less restrict your right to come up and say what you wanted to say than I would his. That's what makes this country great. The First Amendment has to allow both sides, not one side. So in saying that, the last thing I want to do is take a little bit of parental glean here and wish my daughter, Marissa, who's in Texas, a very happy 23rd birthday. We miss you. I don't know how you got to be 23. We wish you were home, but we're glad you're there doing what you're doing there in Texas. In saying that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you all.